And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Peterson is unable to be with us this evening, but he sends his Thanksgiving greetings to everyone in the community tonight. So, and Michelle Alexander called in sick this evening. I just want to read one quick thing here. There was a public hearing scheduled for tonight, so if anyone is here for that public hearing, it is regards to tourist homes. You can leave because that hearing is going to be rescheduled for December, let's see it here, December, December 18. So if you're here for the hearing, you may leave now, if you so wish, or stay around and enjoy the meeting. Also, I just want to say that tomorrow night, there is a Thanksgiving Day dinner down at the East End Rec Center. The public is welcome. It begins at 5:00. And look forward to seeing many of our residents down there. And you don't have to live in the fourth ward to go to that dinner, so everyone can attend. Okay, we have some special guests with us again tonight. They were here a year ago, just a little bit later, I think early part of December. And we'd like to welcome the Winona Senior High School Football Team, Coach Cassilius, and the parents of some of these players that are here tonight. We're here tonight to recognize that you had a very good and a very fine season. It was quoted by Logan Smith. Where's Logan? I see his parents are here. There he is. He says it was a good season. "I am proud of all of us and all the accomplishments we made." And I'll tell you right now, all you young men out there, you have made some very, very good accomplishments. You have taken Winona football to its top level, and you know, being up at the Metro, the Metrodome, up at, up at US Bank Stadium on the Jumbotron, seeing the pictures of you fellows making plays, seeing the name Winona come across there, it's very, very, very moving. So, kind of a little bit, I thought we did last year the same thing. How many of you young men have been through the Maury Miller Athletic Program Football Camp? Okay, several of them. How many of you people or young men have had Councilman Paul Scholmeyer for a teacher? Okay, okay, there's a couple, so, all right, very, very good. So, what we're gonna do is we're gonna begin way into corner here. We're just gonna have, we're gonna go right across the front, keep going back. I want to have you stand up, give your name, give your position, your number, I guess we know your number, you have them on, last year they didn't, but your name, your position, and your year in school. So let's start right over there on my left.
John Bolson, running back, outside linebacker, and I'm a senior.
My name's Logan Smith, I'm a defensive back, and I'm a senior.
Adam Running Manager, and I'm a freshman.
Nicholas Brozinski, I'm a DB, and I'm a senior.
Josh Roddy, I'm a wide receiver and a DB, and I'm a senior.
Matt Leahy, I'm a lineman, and I'm a junior.
Bennett Ashton, I'm a lineman, I'm a sophomore.
Riley Bossler, quarterback, I'm a senior.
Justin O'Beal, I'm an outside linebacker, senior.
Dakota Matthews, I'm a wide receiver, defensive end, and backup punter, and I'm a senior.
Benny Martin, lineman, senior.
Nick Waldo, I'm a lineman, senior.
Jacob Gaud, lineman, senior.
Bryce Hoffman, lineman, senior.
I'm Justin Shields, I'm a lineman, freshman.
Justin Kowski, I'm an outside linebacker, wide receiver, sophomore.
Jake Cummings, lineman, sophomore.
Fulton Byer, outside linebacker, running back.
Colin Hardy, running back, junior.
Matthew Goddard, running back, senior.
Sunny Tal, wide receiver, sophomore.
Jacob Dumas, wide receiver and DB, and I'm a freshman.
Kenon Berger, wide receiver, senior.
Tommy Roberts, lineman, senior.
Robert Warren, running back, senior.
Rex Shilis, kicker, sub, freshman.
Probably both of you signing outside linebacker, freshman.
Seth Wilden, fullback, inside linebacker, freshman.
Brady Ward, wide receiver, outside linebacker, and I'm a sophomore.
Sora Hall, wide receiver, DB, junior.
Aaron Witt, horrified lineman, sophomore.
Chuck Palmer, running back and linebacker, sophomore.
Sam County, running back and fullback, sophomore.
Cal Ripken, lineman, sophomore.
Austin Luchek, outside linebacker, sophomore.
Is that everyone?
Coaches?
Yeah, coaches next.
Coach, you guys, come on in.
I'm Steve Johnson, office line coach.
Ryan Steinoff, inside linebacker coach.
Artis Tito.
Fred Steady Office Coordinator.
John Solis, head of the board.
Okay, thank you. Last year, I know Councilman Craig mentioned, he says that some of you players out there should maybe contact Mike Zimmer. He might need some help on the offensive and defensive lines. And the way the football season is going this year, I think you can probably contact the Green Bay Packers and Dallas Cowboys. They may need some help, too, so.
They don't need help. Packers are doing fine.
Okay, Coach, if you want to join me at the podium here, I have a proclamation I'd like to present to you. Okay, good to have all you guys here. There's a lot of where as on here, so I'm just not repeating anything. And thank you to our city clerk, Monica Henze Mohan, who put this together quickly today because everything happened pretty fast, so. All right, City of Winona, proclamation. Whereas the Winona Senior High School Football Team made it to the Minnesota State Class High School 4A State Tournament two years in a row, and whereas the Windhawks 2017 season record was 11-1, and whereas the Windhawks were ranked number one in the state this season, and whereas the Windhawks had a 17-14 victory against Fridley High School in the Class 4A Quarterfinals game, whereas the Windhawks competed against Holy Angels in Class 4A for a Class 4A State Semi-Final Game at US Bank Stadium in Minneapolis, and whereas the Windhawks lost to Holy Angels by a score of 26-22, and whereas the City of Winona is proud of Winona Senior High School Football Team, coaches, and their successes this season. Now therefore, I, Attorney Mayor George Borzakowski, hereby congratulate the Winona Senior High School 2017 Football Team, and will hereby proclaim November 20, 2017, as Windhawk Football Day in the City of Winona. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Nick Waldo, and I am a senior at Winona Senior High School. I've had the privilege of playing on the varsity football team since I'm a sophomore on offense and defense. We would like to thank the city council members for recognizing our achievements and inviting us to join you tonight. We had an amazing season, and we are proud to represent our school and community. On behalf of our team, I'd like to thank everyone for all their support and helping us get as far as we did this year. Winning the district championship, second section championship, and making it back to play at the US Bank Stadium, our memories that each of my teammates will have for a lifetime. Thank you.
I have to agree with what Waldo said, but I also have to add, I just want to say thank you to all of our coaches for putting up with the senior class for four years. Probably was a really hard thing to do, since most of us are kind of jerks. And then, I want to just make a promise to you guys, that this underclass, these underclassmen will make it a third trip back to the band next year, because they're one of the hardest working, or some of the hardest working people I've ever met in my life. And I can speak for all the seniors when I say that we're thankful that we played with these guys.
I'd like to thank the city again for recognizing this team. I love each and every one of these guys, we spend a ton of time with them as the coaches. You know, we're in on Saturdays breaking down film, we're in on Sundays, and we do it because we love these kids. We put in the time, because we know that it's gonna make them better men. And it's not all about what happens on the field, it's about all the time we spend with them throughout the week. You guys just get to see the finished product on Friday nights or on game nights, but these young men have definitely matured over the years and continue to grow, and I think they'll make Winona proud in the future. So, to the parents, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity to coach these young men and support us during this time. And young men, seniors, go out and make us proud. And underclassmen, make sure you find that senior that was special to you, and find out what their biggest regret was during their time as a Windhawk. What would they change if they could? And learn from that, and take that to heart, and move forward and do what they tell you. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach. Anyone on council have any remarks for the coach or the team at all?
Just congratulations again, as a graduate from 19... Awesome. Good job. Thank you.
I'll echo what Councilman Thurlie is saying. And I'm not afraid to say I'm a 76'er. And good job, guys, it's really fun to see you guys grow and mature, and it's been a blast the last couple of years, being a Winona high graduate, and actually seeing our football team up there at State. Thanks a lot.
Pam, anything you want to share?
Just my heartfelt congratulations to all of you for all of your hard work.
And I probably don't know if I should say this or not, but I am a 1971 graduate of Cotter High School, so. You know how the Catholics are doing now, so. Anyway, gentlemen, thank you for a good season. For you seniors, good luck in your future endeavors. Juniors will carry the torch along with the sophomores, and we'll see you again next November. Thank you. You are excused to leave unless you want to stay for the meeting.
No one wants to stay?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we can leave?
Yes, I did. Yes, I did. Looks like his mother. Looks like his mother. I'm just reading these ratings, and I'm reading this. And this, I already read.
Some are hockey, some are basketball, and a bunch are track.
Those linemen were, oh, they were good size.
Pretty stout fellows.
Yeah, a lot bigger than that one kid last year. Yeah, they were.
Well, that pretty much empties out the chambers, huh? Okay, we will continue on. Just another announcement here, the City of Winona's online auction for the Masonic Theater drops and set pieces is currently open on govdeals.com and runs until 7:00 PM Central Time Wednesday, November 29. There is a link to the auction website on the city's website, City of Winona. Please see the online posting for all the information and full details. And then I just have one more proclamation I would like to read. Whereas the City of Winona and the State of Minnesota has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation educational institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. And whereas general aviation and the Winona Municipal Airport have an immense economic impact on the City of Winona, and whereas Minnesota is home to 135 public use airports, airports, not porches, which serve 11,972 pilots and 5,679 active general aviation aircraft. And whereas Minnesota is home to 111 fixed base operators, 52 repair stations, 83 helicopters, 13 FAA-approved pilot schools, 2,033 flight students, and 2,627 flight instructors. And where general aviation in Minnesota contributes over $5.3 billion, and whereas general aviation not only supports Minnesota's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, and disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely. And whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit, and congressional oversight should be in place of this system to ensure that it remains a public system and serves the communities of all sizes. Now therefore, Mayor Mark Peterson, Mayor of Winona, Minnesota hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the City of Winona, and declare November 2017 as General Aviation Appreciation Month. Okay. There is that there. And I would just like to just pass on condolences to the family of Ruth Marg. I believe everyone at his council table knew Ruth Marg. She served on the school board for a term or two, and she attended many of our council meetings. And Ruth was a down-to-earth woman, had a very strong interest in politics in school, in school politics, and she was just a good old down-to-earth woman. So condolences to her family. And also, I'd like to pass on congratulations to Linda Arnoldi, who celebrates 40 years at the Winona Workforce Center. Congratulations to her. Mr. Manager.
Just wanted to announce that the Healthy Lake Winona and City partnered on a Conservation Partners Legacy Grant for Lake Winona, and they were successful in getting $120,000 to remove Woody invasive species and install wave barriers amongst other projects. The project is expected to start on February of 2018 and will conclude in May or June of 2021. So long-term project that will have great impact on the community and certainly on Lake Winona. And then lastly, the mayor did send a text message to me. He and his wife were spending the night in Winona, Mississippi, and sent their regards.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Monica, roll call.
Mayor Peterson, Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig, Alexander, Idan. Here. Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
And under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1 is a request for a premises permit for lawful gambling for the Goodview Activity Group to be used at the ground round.
Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the resolution.
I'll second that. Moved by Pam, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 3.2, the extension of the Wesley United Methodist Church Perking Lots lease. Yes, I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Moved by Pam.
Second.
Seconded by Paul. Discussion?
I'm just noting that I will abstain on this motion, so I don't know if that affects the outcome.
You need four votes for a resolution to pass. And I think, given the circumstances, you'd be okay to vote for it, Councilman Thurlie.
Yeah, just so the public knows, I serve on the Board of Trustees of Wesley United, so we're making that perfectly transparent. So, again, at the advice of our attorney, then I will vote on the motion.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Under new business, item 5.1 is the agreement between the City of Winona and Borzakowski Towing and Salvage for towing for the next year.
I've moved to authorize the manager and clerk to execute the agreement.
Moved by Al.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Any discussion on the matter at all? I just want to clarify one, that my name is Borzakowski, not Borzakowski. I am not associated with the towing at all, and I will be voting tonight on that recommendation, so. Al?
I was just gonna say that Ed and Joanne have done a wonderful job for the city. It's been probably not a happy one if your car is towed, but they are a good company, and we appreciate their services to our community, even though they are based in good view.
They do a good job, I agree with them.
I do have a question.
Paul?
And I'm not sure if it can be answered, but $100 for a tow, is that typical for a city our size now? Yeah, just curious.
I'm not sure that the size of the city, it's the cost that, and how many people, how many companies you can actually get a bid from. Some are higher, much higher towing fees.
And I believe if you are towed at night, 1, 2, 3, in the morning, I don't know if the price is the same because of the danger of trying to tow vehicles at night, especially in downtown, so. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the agreement between the City of Winona and Borzakowski Towing, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 5.2 is a resolution to certify polling places for the 2018 primary and general election. This is due to a new statutory change, that cities are required to certify polling places by December 31. And just for everyone's information, the filing period for council opens Tuesday, May 22.
I'll move to approve the resolution.
Second that.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Al have anything?
No, I don't.
Thought you were gonna say filing opens is coming Tuesday. Okay, all in favor of the resolution to certify the polling places for 2018 primary and general election, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 5.3 is a contract amendment for the transit for dial-a-ride service with Three Rivers Community Action.
I'll move to approve the attached amendment.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Al. Do you want to explain what the change here is?
So, beginning December 1, the city will be providing something called dial-a-ride service with our transit system, and people can call the transit dispatch number 454-6666, and schedule a ride anywhere within the City of Winona and Goodview and two miles out. The only criteria is that your destination or pickup has to be at least four blocks off the current route. So if you're just, if you can be on the regular route, you have to take the regular bus, but if you're going somewhere outside of that area, you can schedule a pickup. And the fare is $1.30, and so this is to amend the contract with Three Rivers to provide those additional hours.
Pam?
Yes. So, this is termed, that the bus would be provided on a demand-response basis. Does that mean that there is a special bus that will do this service? Correct. We have a new vehicle, it's a Class 400, it's a step down, or a step smaller than the regular buses, and it will be dedicated to only dial-a-ride. Okay, and we are, so then we would hire specific drivers for this bus, and it would wait in the parking lot until it was... So Three Rivers has a number of drivers, and they can drive either the dial-a-ride or the regular routes, and they would be, through this contract, they would staff that bus. Okay. Very interesting. I look forward to hearing more about the ridership and see what happens as we track what happens here. Great.
Okay, we had a motion. Now, all those in favor for the contract amendment for transit dial-a-ride service, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 5.4, modifications to Chapter 66, right-of-way management, and Luke Sims is here to explain the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. During the 2017 legislative session, the legislature addressed small cell wireless, and this proposal to change the Section 66 of City Code is to bring the City of Winona into compliance with those changes from the state legislature. It'll bring us up to date on state statutes specifically regarding small cell, our small wireless facilities and their uses and providers. Specifically, the legislature determined that cities would not be able to place a moratorium upon this or deny outright. So we have a new permitting process in Section 6608, as well as what activities can be taken by wireless service providers that do not require a permitting process, as well as height restrictions of up to 50 feet or 10 feet above a co-location currently existing utility pole, whichever is less. Like I said before, this is just a reason to comply with Minnesota State statute.
Questions?
We need a motion.
I'll move to introduce and approve the attached ordinance.
Moved by Paul.
Second.
Seconded by Pam. Al?
I do have a question. I know there's a section on the telecommunication, what is it here? Has to do with historic districts. Can you kind of go over what that is? I didn't know, probably a few right away, but I think there's some protection for communities that have historic buildings and districts and things like that, right?
We're allowed to address aesthetic concerns, in particular toward the historic districts here in the City of Winona, where we do want to focus on that in the big commercial notes of Third Street and Second Street Historic District. So we're not allowed to outright deny a permit application, but we are allowed to address the way that that can be facilitated in a better way that is more aesthetically pleasing, blends in with the existing script scape.
And do you anticipate applications forthcoming for this process?
We do anticipate applications forthcoming. A company named Mobility has been in conversations with the engineering department and public works department here at the City of Winona, so we do expect some applications. There is a mapping requirement based on those applications coming from companies, so they must provide mapping of where they will be placing these facilities and what they will be looking like, and then we can address that through the permitting process.
Does this have any impact on residential areas?
Potentially, there could be locations along city right-of-way in some residential areas, but at this time, we don't know exactly where that would be located.
And this is again something that the city has little control over because it's a state passed ordinance or legislation, so we're just bringing our regulations in compliance with that.
Correct, we're just matching state statute.
Okay, just wanted to make that clear.
Anything else? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor of modifications to the Chapter 66, right-of-way management, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 5.5 is Support Authority and 1021 LLC Development Agreement, TIF Number 4 at 1021.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the attached resolution.
Right, second that.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Pam. Lucy, do you want to say anything on this, or? I know this request was heard in front of the Port Authority, and the Port Authority did recommend approval of this, so.
That's correct. The Port Authority recommended approval of the development agreement, and the city council in September of this year approved creating the tax increment district. So this outlines how the development will occur and the process.
Questions, Al?
I just wanted to comment that I think this is very, very special for our city and our downtown area, because we're taking a building that was damaged by fire, and there's private investment, public... So this outlines how the development will occur and the process.
Questions? Al?
I just wanted to comment that I think this is, this is very, very special for our city and our downtown area because we're taking a building that was damaged by fire, and there's private investment, public investment, that's a good partnership, to get that building restored and be a viable structure again in our downtown. So I definitely will support the motion.
It's a very large project, though.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor of the resolution for the Port Authority and 102 Walnut LLC Development Agreement, TIF Number Four, 102 Walnut, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 5.6 is a call for public hearing for RCIL Southeastern Minnesota Barrier-Free Housing Corporation. The hearing would be held on December 18th, and I believe we have representatives from RCIL here to talk to you.
Okay, do we need a motion first to approve this hearing? Is there a motion to set the public hearing date?
So moved.
Moved by Pam, seconded by Paul. Okay, Mr. Janander?
Sonnenbaum.
Sonnenbaum, excuse me, excuse me. Here, I was getting along good with him.
I'll take that as a compliment.
Okay.
I'll pass it on to Ken. Anyway, I'm the president of the Board of RCIL Southeastern Minnesota, et cetera. Too long a name for me to remember some days. Anyway, we operate two apartment buildings, one in Red Wing and the other in Winona, at the corner of, it has a Broadway address, I noticed, but it's at the corner of Fifth and Morton Streets. I'm sorry, I get confused. Pelzer, I guess it is. Pelzer's got the bridge, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Pelzer Street.
Pelzer and Fifth.
And it's a 14-unit apartment building. It serves persons with disabilities. It's been there, been in place for about 28 years. The board that operated it for years kind of has reached a point where they just felt they were unable to continue, and what we've done is reconstituted the board, some new people involved with it. In the process of reconstituting the board, we've arranged for different management. It's been managed out of the Twin Cities, which frankly is difficult to manage it well in Winona, you know, at the distance in Winona. The Wabashaw housing people will be assisting with management now under a contract. And in the process, we looked at the financing on the project. It had a HUD mortgage. It needs rehabilitation, 28 years with no major regular maintenance, but no major repairs or upgrades. So the proposal is to borrow through bonding approximately $1.2 million that will pay off the existing mortgage of in the 700, 7 and a half, 750,000 range. The remaining cash would be applied to rehabilitation. We've discussed, actually, we started out discussing with the City of Winona, a possibility of doing tax-exempt revenue bonding for the project. Your capacities, I understand, are essentially exhausted. You suggested we talk to Goodview. We have, pardon me, and Goodview is willing to be the agent, the fiscal agent, or the, you know, the agent to issue the bonds and lend us the money. We need the approval of both the City of Winona and the City of Red Wing to do the project in your city jurisdiction here. We're asking Red Wing the same, for them to approve doing it within their jurisdiction. We met with the Goodview Council to proceed with the, they acting as the issuer on the financing. So the purpose of this is largely to bring the matter up for a hearing. The city approval would not, would be to allow the use of the conduit financing that falls within federal statute, will replace the HUD financing at a substantially lower interest rate, and actually be able to do quite a bit here with less. The payments will be less, put the unit on better financial stead, and probably give us, allow us to, you know, to continue renting to persons with substantial needs at numbers that are going to be within the affordability guidelines and that. It's a restricted occupancy, and we have to meet qualifications. It's been under HUD. We will continue to have to meet those, have the residents meet those qualifications under the new financing. And hopefully, we see it as a real asset to the city to provide this type of housing. As those of you who are talking to my wife probably realize, there's actually a need for much more, but this is existing housing. If everything would fall into place, when would you begin construction? Well, there won't be any major construction. It's pretty much step, step along rehabilitation work. We'd be doing some of that in the 2018 time period, depending on circumstances and what the character of it, it might even go into 2019. There's also the expectation that we'll be applying for some state grant funds to carry the, to do the rehabilitation at numbers that exceed what this bonding takes care of. But the units would continue to be occupied. There's not an intention of, it's not of a major character that we'd be replacing. I believe one of the, type of major thing you'd think of would be a new roof on the building, some upgrades in the apartments. I understand that some of the things like kitchen appliances and that may be, may actually be original to the building. You know, some of that doesn't, doesn't last forever, kind of at the point where some of it needs to be placed. But again, it would be done in a, in a manner that would keep people in their units, keep people, keep the building occupied, and might take place over a year, two years in time.
Okay.
Al? If you would, you should contact John Howard, works for the city, and talk about our Partners in Energy program, and maybe there's a way we can do some efficiency upgrades as well to the building.
Sure, and I think that obviously in the planning, I forget, some of that is ahead, but energy efficiency would be high on the list.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this judgment.
Okay, you ready to vote? Call for the public hearing, RCIL Southeastern Minnesota Barrier-Free Housing, to be set on? December 18th. All in favor of that signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Al, let's begin with you. You're there by yourself tonight.
Well, it's, you know, okay. Again, congratulations to the Winhawks on their successful football season. I will say it out loud, it's a 1966 graduate of Winona High, so nobody gets confused if I'm even older than that. But congratulations to them on their wonderful season and great playoff season as well. And also, you know, we have this holiday coming up on Thursday called Thanksgiving, and I just got a little note about a program that's going to be coming up on, I think it's a syndicated program, I don't know if people are familiar with the program called The Chew, which is, I think, a syndicated program on ABC or something, and I'm not, but apparently it's fairly popular, and it's on one of the local stations here. And I just received word that my nephew and his wife and their three-year-old were going, are going to be featured on the show that comes up tomorrow at noon. I think it's WXOW out of La Crosse that'll be on at noon. His name is Sean Ron, it's Melissa Ron, his wife, and their little guy, Parker. So it's kind of interesting. Sean grew up in Minnesota City, so he's sort of a native of this area. He's served in various capacities. Actually, he was, I think, most recently working for the Minnesota Department of Transportation. Now, he's working for another organization, but apparently he has a love of cooking, which I didn't realize even as his uncle. But he and his wife are going to be featured on this show tomorrow at noon, and we're going to be watching it, so congratulations to him. And I do wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and if you're traveling, or even if you're not, drive safely wherever it is you're going. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
So as you, as you heard, the group Healthy Lake Winona got a great grant to start, continue the work on the lake shore and in the, at the lake edge in order to make some, some true improvements in the, in the quality of the water. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency several years ago announced that Lake Winona was an impaired water, so that's what Healthy Lake Winona, the group, has stepped forward to try and make some improvements. If any of you are interested in that work or interested in the group, you should, first of all, get on the website or get on the Facebook site for Healthy Lake Winona. And second of all, please watch for a call for volunteers, because this grant will require quite a bit of in-kind labor for us to accomplish this, so. Thank you.
Paul? Thanks. So, and if you do volunteer for Healthy Lake Winona, you might find out what a core log is. Great work to John Howard and Professor Mundal and Gabe Erickson for kind of spearheading, writing that grant. I want to thank Marcy and Kathy from Winona National Bank for helping keep the municipal parking lot rain gardens wheat-free and garbage-free over the last year, and they are kind of sponsoring that, that rain garden on our behalf, and it's looking good. And I also wanted to acknowledge the Parks Department. Thanks for getting up the signs to show people where to go for the new trailhead for Sugarloaf and putting up the "Please Don't Access the Trail Here" signs at, on Westburns Valley Road. I've already noticed a difference in fewer cars parking there, and I'm really looking forward to that project moving forward. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one thing I want to add. If we don't know, if you could check into, is the 20-hour parking limit, is that also for campers?
Yes.
Boat trailers?
Yes.
With boats on or off?
Yes.
Snowmobile trailers?
Yes.
Motor homes?
Yes.
Okay, so the 20-hour, okay, the 20-hour is for all of them, as I was asked last week, Thursday night about that, so. All right, so it's 20 hours for all of those vehicles and motorcycles, I presume?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Skateboards?
And skateboard, no. And happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there.
And under the consent agenda, there are three items. Approval of the minutes from November 6th, the final adoption of an ordinance for handicap parking at 406 Mankato Ave, and the final adoption of an ordinance for Winona State Campus Parking Enforcement.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second that.
Moved by Al, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Carried.
Council President, I move we adjourn.
Moved by Al.
Second.
Seconded by Paul. All in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Carried. All right, thank you. Good night.
I have a few items for you to sign.